I said it once, but I really think that this document is one of the most important ones that we have in the city for future. So I appreciate the work that Phil and his team have gotten us to this point. And it's been a long time coming. And so Phil's going to go into that history a little briefly here in just a second. But thanks again. And a little housekeeping. Beth over here in the corner has pens and pieces of paper and pads. If you want to take notes or give us feedback, or if you have a question for me or the staff or anybody, just write it down. The goal of the meeting is to gather as much input as possible. So if you have a quick thought, you want to write it down, just raise your hand and she'll get you a notepad. And we're going to gather it up and take all this feedback back to put into the document. So that's Beth. And then Kristen's got the microphone, is going to have the microphone if you have a question so that everybody on the live stream can hear and participate virtually. So thanks again. And I'll let you take it away, Phil.
Okay, thanks. Awesome. Well, it's good to be back. It's been a while, but it's great to be back in Hernando. And I'm going to introduce, probably everybody knows, oh yeah, we're going to, you're going to try to do the, yeah. So you probably know who all the planning commissioners are and staff. I'm Phil Walker with the Walker Collaborative. I'm based in Nashville. And I'll just introduce my team here. We've got Keith Covington here who's a planner, architect, and urban designer. He's based in Franklin, Tennessee. And we've got from Neil Schaefer, Russ Brian. Russ is out of Hattiesburg, Mississippi. And we got Randall Gross here who's our economist. And he is based in Nashville. I was trying to think specifically the city, but it's Nashville. Anyway, it's good to be back. And what we'll talk about tonight, if my colleagues can quit laughing at me, is I'll give you a little bit of background information because a lot of you were probably at the, when we were here over two years ago, at a lot of the meetings where we went through all of our analysis, all of our findings. And then I'll talk a little bit about the public input that we heard at the time, and a set of planning principles that came out of that. And then we'll spend most of the time really presenting the draft plan. And then we'll have at the end as much time for discussion as you'd like. So that's, that's what we'll be doing. And the big caveat, as you can see up there, is that it's really been over two years since we drafted the plan, because after we did the initial draft, there were a couple of rounds of edits. And so the date on the last version is March 22 of 2021. But, so it's good to kind of dust things off and get back at it. The other thing I'll mention too, I'm sure there'll be a lot of things that we're recommending that maybe circumstances have changed, maybe some things, if we're lucky, have even been implemented. So, but I'm sure we're going to learn about all of that during the Q and A part of it. So, so this is basically a five step project. Task one was the project kickoff and our initial research. We then did a lot of visioning, that is, public engagement to see what, you know, people's opinions are. Randy did an economic assessment, specifically, he did a retail market analysis because that's something that the city was interested in figuring out how you could get more retail development. Then task three was the charrette and concept plan. And if you're not familiar with the term charrette, I always describe it as a multi-day intensive brainstorming session that engages the public in a very hands-on way to come up with the key ideas for a plan. So when we did the charrette here, well, you know what, I'm going to talk about that a few slides later. So I'll hold off on the details. And then, of course, once we got the public input from, based on our concept plan, that was at the tail end of the charrette, we prepared the plan document and submitted it. We got a couple of rounds of edits. And that's kind of where things stood for quite a while. So, so here we are presenting. And of course, we'll make edits based on our feedback that we get. So, I'm not going to go into all the history and the natural features and built features right now. But these are the kinds of things we looked at, at the front end of the project, just, you know, studying everything, economics, previous plans, your current regulations, all those sorts of things. And the initial kickoff meeting was back in June of 2020. And we had a whole bunch of stakeholder meetings and interviews in late July of 2020. And I've got just two slides that kind of summarize the key things that we were hearing from people. And these are things that were kind of reiterated time and again, and seemed to be kind of the major themes, right? So first of all, you know, why Hernando is so unique? Hernando is the only town in the region that feels like a separate town. You know, we heard that from a lot of people. It's not like it's been sucked into the metro Memphis area. It actually feels distinct and has its own character. You know, a lot of it's probably because of the square and so forth. But I thought that was really interesting. When it comes to mobility, you know, most people thought there's too much traffic congestion. They talked about Commerce Street quite a bit, especially during rush hour. I'm sure that's still an issue. There was a lot of support for non-motorized options such as, you know, bikeways and greenways. When it came to housing, it was kind of interesting because, you know, there were people who said they'd like to see a greater variety of housing types beyond just single-family homes and affordability. But there were also people who pushed back on that. They were like, no, they don't, they're not necessarily interested in seeing more variety and were concerned about, you know, how that might impact property values or other, you know, issues that they were citing. So kind of a mixed bag on that. Commercial and mixed-use development, people wanted to see more commercial development, not just to have more options for shopping and dining, but also for, they recognized the need for more tax revenue for the city. Dining options were something they wanted to see more of. Even food trucks were mentioned quite a bit. When it comes to the square, I mean, that is where there's so much community support. People love the square. And it was cited a lot as a reason why people feel that, you know, Hernando really is its own distinct community. When it comes to form and character of new development, you know, people said, okay, a lot of people thought it's okay to have more growth, but if done properly. In other words, good design is really important. And some think that the character of new development might reflect the square. And they wanted to see stronger landscaping requirements. And then finally, with parks and recreation, people wanted to see both existing facilities improved and the development of new recreational facilities. It was also suggested that the pennies for parks, if y'all remember this from back, I think it was 2014, there was a referendum to increase a sales tax to go towards parks. And it wasn't successful, but a lot of people, and we'll talk about that a little later, thought that that should be kind of reinvigorated, that effort. I mentioned about a charrette. So at the front end of this week-long process, we typically get a lot of people together in a room and give everybody base maps and they come up with their own plans. Now, if you recall though, in October of 2020, we were at the peak of COVID. And things weren't being done as they normally would be done. And so we held an event outside. It wasn't quite our normal approach, but we got, it was a good way to get input from people in sort of a hands-on way. And once we did that, then we had, that was kind of our launchpad for the rest of the week to put together the concept plan that we presented. And we came up with 10 principles. Okay, these are kind of broad things that hopefully, if you get into some debate on some detailed issue, you can sort of step back and think, okay, how do our principles, how does this issue fit in with the overall principles? So here they are. Number one, preserve open space and environmentally sensitive lands and enhance Hernando's overall environmental quality. Number two, maximize and leverage Hernando's existing community assets. And that can be, be a lot of different things, assets, whether it's natural resources or historic resources or human assets, whatever. Number three, foster vibrant and walkable neighborhoods, offering a high quality of life. Number four, create a range of housing opportunities and affordable choices for Hernando. Five, mixed land uses to create pedestrian-friendly places. Six, promote high-quality development with a strong sense of place. Seven, provide more than adequate recreational and cultural amenities. Eight, provide a variety of transportation alternatives and high-quality transportation corridors. Nine, expand economic development opportunities in the community. And then 10, ensure policies and processes that are equitable to citizens and developers. So those are kind of the guiding principles. And with the plan that we're about to present, hopefully it achieves some of these, well, all of these principles. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Keith.
Thanks, Phil. To echo what he said, it's great to be back. It has been a while, but we're glad to be here. And I am getting old and can't see, so I'm going to put on my glasses here so I can read. So, one of the key components of most comprehensive plans, any comprehensive plan, is something that's often called the future land use plan. And the future land use plan is used by those in positions to make decisions like the planning commission or the council on, you know, development proposals, proposed subdivisions, rezonings, and things like that. One of the trends that we have seen across the country in the past, probably 10 years, is a shift away from just looking at land use only. So for example, in an old land use plan, downtown Hernando, which you see in the top photo there, might have been colored red on the map for commercial. And then the Kroger Shopping Center, which is out East Commerce, or out, yeah, East Commerce, was also red for commercial. But what you realize is that downtown Hernando and Commerce Street are very different characters. They have different characters. Not saying that one is necessarily worse or better than the other. We could debate that all day, right? But they are, they have different characters. So the approach that we take is to look at your community in terms of place types. And there are many determinants of place type. Land use is still considered, that's still very important. But in addition to land use, spatial patterns are considered, intensity and density of development is considered, the scale, form, and character of development is considered too. So if we take that, we can identify, what we've identified is essentially five place type categories, from natural to a category we call special. And within each of those categories, there are subcategories. And the way that these are implemented is through your zoning, okay, and development regulations. You typically, after a comprehensive plan is complete, you make tweaks to your development regulations to help implement your place types plan or map. So, this is a stylized diagram of showing these five categories. So they range from natural, which is exactly, you know, what you would expect, basically, very little to no development, to your rural areas, which are slightly more developed and may have a lot of agricultural uses, to your suburban areas, which are typically a little bit more auto-oriented, your urban areas, which are like your downtown and your surrounding historic neighborhoods. And then for those certain place types, or certain development types, that don't really fit into one of those categories, there's a special category for them. So think about like institutional campuses, like a college campus, or an industrial park, which would be very relevant to Hernando. So, this is the place types map. This has also been printed out. There's three printouts. So I am sure that it's going to be very difficult for you to see on here if you haven't reviewed the plan, the draft plan yet. But, you know, afterwards, you could come up, take a closer look at these, and we'll be happy to answer questions about them. But this is the color-coded place types map. And, and we have, you know, one subtype for natural, one for rural, five for the suburban areas, four for the urban areas, and then for the special, we have two categories for that. And, and it should be important to note is that, you know, if place types are converted into zoning, or your current zoning is tweaked to implement those place types, it really only applies to new development, when new development is proposed. It's not a retroactive kind of thing. And, and also, you know, new roads may be, may change some place types. So that's something else to keep in mind. I'm just going to walk you through each of these. So bear with me on this, and we'll, we'll get through it. So the natural areas, again, are mostly the floodways and floodplains, streams and wetlands and steep slopes, places that you don't want, that you want to avoid building, that you want to preserve in their natural features. So there's Hurricane Creek there, that's an example. So the locations of these natural areas is really all over the city, but particularly at the periphery and associated with those creeks and floodplains. The geographic form is very meandering because it's usually following a stream or some sort of topographic condition. Now, the optimal land uses are really, you know, undeveloped land areas and fields, outdoor passive recreation, greenways and so forth. And there's really no development form, because these are the areas where we really don't want to see development occurs, or it's very limited in these areas. So if we move to that next level of the place types categories, rural areas. So in, in the rural areas, we typically see single-family lots that are at least three acres inside, or size, or greater than three acres. And that's really kind of the threshold for what really starts to feel rural versus just, you know, low-density, single-family development. But certainly, the lots could be much greater than that. So you can see that the rural place type is really mostly in the area of your kind of planning jurisdiction, which might, which is beyond the actual town boundaries that you currently have. So the idea would be that in this area, for the time being, that these really need to be preserved as these rural areas and agricultural lands, and that the majority of development, if it happens, should occur within the core of the community and really mostly within the confines of the town boundaries. It's very expansive. And, and the optimal land uses are obviously open space and very low-density single-family. Other than natural areas, again, the density is relatively low. And then the form is primarily residential, but also associated outbuildings, you know, farm structures and things like that, that would be associated with that. And there's some character imagery of that rural character. And of course, another thing that you should notice, and, and I know Russ will talk about this as well, but the, the idea that the roadways should also mimic those character patterns too. You know, so in a rural area, it's expected that there should be, you know, rural character on your roadways. Now, if we go up the ladder here to suburban areas, we have several categories there. We have suburban neighborhoods, and there's really three types. So low, medium, and high density. Suburban corridors, which are auto-oriented and linear, but they can still be better than the typical strip commercial corridor. I mean, there are still things that you could do to improve those. And then, of course, you have suburban centers, which do have a lot of the same characteristics as corridors, but they tend to be more what we call nodal and concentrated in, in, in their pattern. So let's look at your low-density suburban neighborhoods first. These are throughout the city. Some examples might be Shadow View Drive or Green Tea Lake. Those are existing development patterns. But there are, you know, areas of undeveloped land that has also been given this designation. They're expansive areas. They're sometimes bound by roads or creeks. It's all single-family detached and any accessory or ancillary uses associated with that. And the development density here is greater than a half an acre, but still under that three-acre threshold of rural. And the development form is very much an automobile orientation. But there could be a conservation subdivision option where by preserving a large amount of open space, you might be able to develop in a more compact pattern. So that's something that, that we can, we can talk about as well. If we move up to the medium density, and again, this is somewhat reflective of what you have now, but some areas around these areas that makes sense to expand this have been identified as well. A good example of a medium-density area is Terra Drive, just to give you some idea if you know where that is. The optimal land uses are medium-density residential and ancillary uses, but still single-family. It's a single-family detached. And lot sizes are less than a half an acre or less than, less than that. And that is reflective of many of your current conditions. The development form, still an automobile orientation, but again, there might be an opportunity for that conservation subdivision option too, to preserve more open space on these development, in, in, in future developments. And then your high-density pattern, this is one where it's pretty much just really focused on your existing apartment complexes, townhouse complexes, and so forth. For example, the villages of Grove Park on McEnville Road is one. And these are typically rectangular and rectilinear, excuse me, in form. And they're relatively high-density residential and ancillary uses. Now, the, 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 the density would be smaller lots for attached housing, but you'd have larger lots for multifamily housing. And one of the key things here that I want to mention about this is that, you know, we heard a lot about not wanting apartment complexes and townhouse complexes in these sort of pods of development that have been, you know, given a bad name, if you will. But that if there was going to be a mix of housing types, that it really needs to be in a pattern that I'm going to show you in just a minute. So we'll talk more about that in a second. So this is mostly reflective of what you have today. And there's just some character imagery. And just because these are auto-oriented and they're single-family detached neighborhoods and so forth, doesn't mean that they can't be designed well. And we'll talk about that in a minute as well. All right. So let's move into the more commercial mixed-use categories in suburban. The suburban corridors first, they're in that pink color. They are, as you could imagine, along key roads within or near other suburban area place types. This is south, excuse me, East Commerce is a perfect example of this. And they usually flank either sides of the road. And they're, they're relatively mixed in their uses, but definitely heavy on commercial, retail dining, personal services, and even offices there. And it's a suburban character in form. You know, there's frequent curb cuts, driveways, and parking that is typically located between the road and the buildings, which is very different than your downtown character where the buildings are at the forefront. In your suburban centers, a good location, Highway 51, East Parkway, these are more nodal. So they're more concentrated. And they might even have a bigger parking demand because of the use. And so these are rather focused in particular locations, but they still have a range of commercial uses and could have even some residential uses to a lesser degree. These are suburban in form, again, including parking between the building and the street. And, and the land uses tend to be very segregated in these types of areas. But again, like the suburban neighborhoods, you know, the suburban commercial areas, the both the corridors and the centers can be better designed when new development comes. There are ways to incorporate better landscaping, a consistent street face, limited parking in front, to really start to make these, and also master planning these to where they're master planned together as well. Now, if we move into our urban areas, there's really three types here. You've got urban neighborhoods, which are primarily residential. There's two subtypes to that, which I'll explain. Village centers, which are small-scale mixed-use areas. And then, of course, your heart, which is your downtown, the core of your community. And that's the square and the immediately surrounding area. So for your urban neighborhoods, you have existing traditional neighborhoods. Those are primarily the historic neighborhoods around downtown. But you also have some recent infill, like the Ivy Neighborhood has a very historic character to it. This is very, very much a nodal form of development because it's usually centered around the downtown commercial, downtown core. And then you have a mixture of houses in here, detached mostly, but there are some attached houses, multifamily, as well as parks and institutional uses and community facilities. So the form of development in these areas is really more one- and two-story houses dating from the late 19th through the mid 20th centuries, and buildings that really front directly onto streets and are part of an interconnected street grid, an interconnected network of streets. So for new traditional neighborhoods, a perfectly, a perfect example of this is the proposed Hernando West development, the very large development that's just planned over here. You know, its form is really determined by property shape. And, and this category does include a high-density range of housing types, public spaces, maybe even some small-scale commercial. But the key thing here is the development form. And the reason why we call this new traditional neighborhoods is because it takes its cues from the historic neighborhoods and your downtown core. So it's very different than the apartment complex and the townhouse complex and the single-family subdivision that's all separated and potted out. This is one that reflects those, those principles of interconnectivity, walkable scale, buildings fronting streets, alleys where appropriate, and so forth. And so those areas have been identified there. And so, those areas ha- have been identified there, and obviously, you see one of them, uh, on the left there is, uh, Hernando West. And here's some, you know, character, very different character, uh, from the suburban areas, um, uh, that you, that we have there. And then, we have a, a couple of, or three actually, areas where we've identified village centers, Nesbit, Highway 51 and Nesbit Road, McInville at the north side of I-69. Um, these really are going to be determined by the shape of their properties, uh, but they're generally centered around intersections, um, and they, uh, have a, a mixture of uses, retail dining, personal services and so forth. And the development form is kind of like downtown, but less intense. So, you're still having buildings that front the, the streets and on-street parking and parking lots behind buildings, but you have sidewalks, parks, plazas and so forth. So, these are, these are smaller versions of, of your kind of downtown. So, here's some examples of that. You can see it's much more of a, of a, you know, a, a low-scale, lower-intensity character than, than the, the downtown or the new traditional neighborhoods. And then, of course, you've got your core, the square and the surrounding area. We all know it's centered on the square, so it's nodal in form, and there's a, a wide variety of uses, retail, dining, personal services, institutional lodging, so forth, uh, are in these, in these areas. And, and again, uh, you know, the character here is that buildings are forward. They front the street, they frame the street, and a lot of historic buildings have that character. So, we kind of know what, what the downtown core is. And you'll notice, maybe not on that, but if you get up and take a look at it closer, that we've extended that, this was actually a change that came out of the, um, uh, from the concept plan to the draft plan, of actually extending that character along East Commerce, uh, to the railroad, in the hopes that at some point in time in the future is after, uh, as those properties redevelop, they might develop with a form that's more appropriate to the, to the downtown character as opposed to the more suburban corridor character, which would be east of the, uh, east of the railroad. But, uh, you know, here's some, some examples of that. Of course, one of them's right here, um, or two of them are right here, and then, um, so, yeah. So, all right, last one, special areas. So, these are, there's really two of these, industrial parks, which are industrial developments, which can include, um, an office component or community facilities, such as governmental or educational campuses and parks. So, in our industrial parks, these need to be areas where there's good access, uh, such as the Hernando Industrial Park. And again, the, their form is really dictated by the shape of the property, uh, and land uses are obviously more industrial uses, but there could be some office uses too. We typically find that the buildings in these areas are larger footprint, you know, for, for warehouse and industrial-type buildings, and they have larger parking lots and generous lands, but they're, but generous landscaping and, and buffering can help to soften, uh, that from, um, from the surrounding land uses. And then, community facilities, they're, they vary, they're all over town, um, and , uh, they include, um, as I said earlier, institutions like schools and parks and so forth, uh, and they can, they can be integrated into these other place types. So, you think about new traditional neighborhoods, new traditional neighborhoods can have small parks that people can walk to, small playgrounds that people can walk to. So, those can actually be and should be really integrated into those other place types where appropriate. And the development form, of course, varies greatly because you have different types of community facilities. Um, so there's some character imagery there. These, these areas can be master-planned, uh, to be better than they typically are. Just a, a couple more things from me on community design. I want to hit on this because we think it's very important. So, basic principles for community design is that, you know, across the board, we really need to increase walkability, maybe not in the rural or natural areas so much, but in your, even in your suburban areas where it's going to be more auto-oriented. It's not just about provision of sidewalks, but it's also creating safe, interesting and attractive places to visit and, 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 um, enjoy a- along the way. And then, where possible, mixing uses, not within a residential neighborhood that's predominantly single-family, but in other areas that, that are, um, um, like those new neighborhoods or like the, the, um, the village centers. The idea of mixing uses to promote walkability and require less driving between where people live, work and shop. And then, of course, taming the motor vehicle, not taking it away, but just saying that we're designing for people, not just for cars, okay? We have to think about other modes of transportation. And then, of course, generous landscaping is great. So, the image that you see there, I mean, that's a walkable neighborhood street. It's got street trees, it's got sidewalks, and it's, and the street is not overly wide, so it actually helps to calm traffic. So, in, in Hernando's residential streets, that's a, one of your neighborhoods up on the, uh, up on the top right there, and we think you should really consider street tree requirements. So, that neighborhood has sidewalks, um, but it, you know, you should really try to avoid waivers from sidewalks, but you have sidewalks, but you don't have street trees. And that would be something that would be something to add to those neighborhoods, the newer neighborhoods, I guess I should say, uh, in the future. And then, for your mixed-use walkable places, you know, buildings should do much more than, than, um, uh, what you see on East Commerce now where it's sort of disjointed and all the buildings are kind of, it is sitting, uh, uh, in their own place with different amounts of parking. You know, even in a suburban area, but particularly in an urban area, you want buildings to front directly onto streets. You want on-street parking and you want lots, uh, parking lots a- as much as possible behind buildings, even if you have a little bit of parking up front in a suburban area. And public spaces can be incorporated into these areas too. Places that people can, can, um, uh, have that, that supplement or complement, uh, the uses around them. Just wanted to, to touch on Hernando West. It is a very large development. I, I have not heard, maybe Phil has, what the latest, uh, is on that, but, um, but, you know, I think that there was some movement when we were here last time that it was going to, to start, but I have not seen any evidence of that. But this is an example of a development that has a mixture of, of uses, a mixture of housing types, and also does a pretty good job of trying to preserve natural areas and streams and so forth, and it's, it's very different than a, than a typical suburban pattern development. But it's also a very large development, and, you know, I don't know what the full build-out would be, but it's, you know, quite a number of units, and it's quite a bit of, uh, commercial space. Um, and then, uh, I think this is my last one. The, the, um, we did a place-specific concept plan for the historic Nesbit area. Um, you can see the existing conditions up there. I'm sure you're all familiar with it, or have driven by it at some point. This is not a master plan for this area. We just wanted to illustrate how, you know, things could be preserved and then things added to kind of help, uh, implement the idea of a, a small village center in this area. So, you'll see, you know, the existing buildings are in gray, new buildings that we showed are in the kind of brown, and you already have the, uh, event space, um, that's just off of Nesbit Road that's right near this area, but you could imagine these areas redeveloping in the future and, you know, doing so with buildings that frame the street and so forth will make for a, 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 a great kind of small, you know, historic and new center in the future. So, we just wanted to illustrate how you could do that and incorporate other uses. We've got residential, we've got commercial and so forth. So, it's just an idea, a concept, not a master plan. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Russ.
I'll, uh, I'll speak the next couple of hours on mobility, if that's okay with everybody? No, I'll be brief. Mobility, of course, is a, kind of a holistic term for transportation, one that factors in a, a lot of what Keith's already mentioned, more than just vehicular use. Um, and our, our goal is to create a transportation plan that's holistic, uh, respects natural features as well as the built environment, uh, adjacent to, and, and you'll see that some of our road types, of course, need to be applied to, uh, future development as well. Uh, we want to find a balance between vehicular operation efficiency and safety for all users. Um, we want road and street design to complement proposed, uh, development. And then, uh, complete streets, of course, is a major component of mobility. And complete streets are those that accommodate vehicular, bicycle, pedestrian, and even the possibility of future transit. Um, so, to talk a little bit more about complete streets, uh, they're a priority, but not a perfect fit for every single roadway or every single corridor in Hernando. You know, we know that. What we, the goal of the plan is to establish complete streets along key corridors so that we can connect people with key, with, with important places that they need to go, whether that's home to work, work to, uh, basic goods and services, make sure that everyone can get where they need to go with or without a vehicle. So, this slide shows, uh, our proposed road and street types. You know, these are what we feel like will be good fits, you know, as the city grows and as future development occurs, uh, that can uniquely accommodate mobility in a variety of ways. The hierarchy is kind of from low volume, low, you know, low volume up to high volume, from top of the list to the bottom of the list. And what I'll do is kind of run through the design of each of these for you. Rural roads are good for low volume and relatively low speeds. You'll see there's two travel lanes with, uh, shared space. You know, that's, that's a key component if, with sharos or shared space with vehicle, vehicles and bike lanes, or bike use, I'm sorry, uh, is going to be good visibility, relatively low speed and low volume. This is a rural parkway, kind of the next step up. It shows, uh, a four-lane divided with median and a, uh, an unpaved shoulder, which of course then can, can possibly be converted into other uses in the future as development occurs. That could be on-street parking or it could become a bike lane as the need arises. Suburban road, two-lane, then you start to see that, that paved shoulder, uh, for a bike lane. Local suburban road, where you see two-lane divided with a median and then a multi-use pathway, uh, on one side and a six-foot sidewalk on the other. And then, this is where you begin to see, uh, streetscape amenities such as the street trees and lighting, those things that Keith mentioned that helped to add value, uh, to the corridor, address a, a wide variety of transportation issues. The next one is a local suburban street, which is two-lane divided with, uh, bike lanes that accommodate, you know, travel for cyclists on both, both directions, and then sidewalks, uh, uh, behind the curb and gutter. And then, an urban parkway, two-lane divided with multi-use pathways. You know, this is where, you know, maybe, uh, to begin to envision this, this would be a good fit for a section of, of East Commerce. And then, the next one is an avenue, two-lane divided with on-street parking and multi-use pathways, uh, on both sides. And then, finally, a local urban street, two travel lanes with on-street parking, large sidewalks that connect, you know, as a potential expansion of a business, restaurant, you know, in a high develop, high, uh, density development area such as downtown. So, some of this could be applied to some of our, some of the streets around the square. So, our plan shows, um, you know, a few items that were documented at the time that are already kind of on the books. A, uh, six-lane expansion and a new, larger, more accommodating interchange at 55 and Commerce. Uh, capacity improvements on Getwell Road and an extension east over to McInville on East Commerce Street. In addition to that, this slide and this page of the comp, of the plan shows kind of how our recommendations of those road and street types to the transportation network. So, I'm not going to run through all of these, but, uh, they are intended to address, um, you know, multimodal type of, um, issues that we've identified, as well as capacity and also connected to projected future development and growth. Um, the plan also recognizes the bicycle and pedestrian master plan that was completed in 2019, um, and how that plan contributes to trans, the, the overall transportation network with the addition, or the, uh, planned use of greenway trails, multi-use pathways, bike lane extensions and sidewalk improvements to help make better connection, again, connecting people with places that they either want to go or need to go. So, that wraps up mobility. Uh, I'm filling in for Vince Malavasi. My colleague wasn't able to be here tonight, so, uh, I'm going to run through our, the utility improvements that the plan also addresses. Those are mainly in terms of water and sewer. The, uh, the city system currently, uh, handles 7,500 customers within the city, about 6,850 of those are handled by the city and about 650 handled by the Nesbit Water Association. Present issues with the system itself is, the main one is that, uh, the system is at about 80% capacity. You know, fire protection rating is good, uh, but capacity as, and that's a good problem to have due to growth, um, and mainly residential growth, but the city is experiencing some low pressures in some areas and is beginning to address this issue with an additional well and elevated tank. From a sanitary sewer system, we've got approximately 6,100 customers. The main issue there is INI or infiltration and inflow of storm water into the sanitary sewer system, which, there's a cost associated with treating that, that total water and that INI, the infiltration of storm water, just adds to the cost, um, of treatment. And so, you know, a couple reasons for that are some deteriorated sewer lines or poor construction. City's begun to, uh, address this issue with field testing and, and beginning to identify places where that storm water is entering the, the sanitary sewer system. Some recommendations we make for both systems are, uh, mapping and hydraulic modeling. What mapping can do is provide the city with a full map of all water and sewer, um, lines so that repairs can be made more efficiently. You rely less on institutional knowledge of people who, um, unfortunately come and go from positions or retire, and, and you lose all that institutional knowledge. You know, it's, it's vital to managing these important assets. Um, and, uh, the system can also anticipate when, when new development is planned, you know, that development can be placed in the model itself in, in, in advance, can proactively plan for additional capacity instead of dealing with problems on the back end after a, a, a new subdivision or a new development occurs. Uh, another recommendation is improved construction oversight, just to make sure that when improvements are made in both systems, that they're done so to the proper specifications, and, um, and just provide ongoing, uh, maintenance and, and eliminate the INI situations with the sanitary sewer system. That's, I'll hand it over to Randy, start with the economics.
Well, good to see you all again. I recognize a lot of faces here, um, after several years, good to see you back. And, uh, I just wanted to talk a little bit about some of the economic and strategic planning, um, input that we have as part of the comprehensive plan. As you recall, as Phil mentioned, um, part of my work involved a retail market analysis because the city and, and residents were very concerned about attracting the right kind of retail and businesses and wanted to fill some gaps in that regard. This was several years ago. Um, so, I conducted a market analysis that determined potential for development of about 112,000 square feet of new retail development. That included about 42,000 square feet of convenience types of businesses, about 30,000 square feet of shoppers' good stores, um, and then about 30,000 square feet of restaurants and, and, uh, drinking establishments, about 30,000 square feet of entertainment and 9,000 square feet of personal services. Um, and there are competitors. This is after I looked at what the competition is in the region, and that's sort of the net potential that you have for development of retail. So, in terms of a recommended mix for recruiting retail businesses or attracting retail to the right locations and making sure that you accommodate retail where you want it, I looked at several different, uh, areas. One is the downtown area and the gateway corridors, one of which Keith, uh, talked about before. And here, we're looking at attracting more entertainment types of venues, things that can happen during the day. I think we heard during some of the meetings that there wasn't a lot going on, um, a- all the time in terms of entertainment, so there's an opportunity there because there is potential for that, there is demand for it. Um, also, about 16,000 square feet of full-service restaurants are recommended, so adding to the restaurant mix. And when you have a, a, a large number of restaurants, it's not that they compete against each other, they actually attract a larger number of consumers to the area to go out to eat. So, it becomes a destination, and that's the kind of place you want to create in your downtown where people can walk to restaurants, see their friends, go out to eat, that sort of thing. Also, some other parts of the mix, recommended mix include books, toys and gift stores, coffee shops, um, sporting goods, uh, specialty food or wine shops. coffee shops, sporting goods, specialty food or wine shop and convenience stores. Then if you look a little bit further away from downtown and some of the other corridors around the city and nodes, there's opportunities for hardware and garden shops, furniture store, health and personal care and auto supply, sort of a recommended mix of uses in those outer corridors. And there's a long list, as you can see on the right, which you cannot possibly read from where you're sitting, that shows each individual retail category and where there is potential for that use. In terms of those corridors and those nodes outside of downtown, there are several strategies recommended for development. One is to enable more mixed-use districts and allow for more amenities at key nodes. As we've discussed several times before tonight, integrating different uses in terms of office, retail, recreation and housing where possible. That helps reduce people pulling in and pulling out of trough, of traffic and, and driving everywhere, but it also allows for more of a community where people can come and recreate and, and go to work and eat and drink in all at the same place. So it's a wonderful experience. Accommodating those large distribution companies that want to be here, but balancing those land uses and making sure that those uses go to the designated areas, the character areas that have been designated for those specific uses. One of the issues that came up several years ago was that during rezoning hearings, they were not only focused on zoning, but also on very detailed design questions. And so we had recommended that, from the developer's perspective, from the development perspective, that we focus zoning on zoning issues. I'm not sure if that issue's been resolved or if there's been some work done to, to, to that, work on that issue, but that was something that had come up several years ago. And then finally, as Keith mentioned, facilitate restoration of the Nesbit Commercial Node by working with the property owners there and packaging the area as an investment opportunity with some of the types of uses that we've talked about tonight. In terms of the broader question of marketing and business recruitment, again, we're trying to aim for creating high-quality mixed-use environments. So enabling or recruiting primary medical, health and professional office uses would be beneficial to the community. This is based on just an assessment of the existing conditions. We didn't forecast what the potential is for office space, but there are those opportunities associated with a growing population. And then obviously, from the retail market analysis, there was some demand for a home center, which is like a Home Depot or a Lowe's, that would capture sales from a broader areas, but it wasn't sufficient at the time to, to attract one of those businesses because the floor plate would be larger in one of those businesses than, than what you could support at that time. I'm not sure if one of those stores has come in since then, but, but there is that opportunity over a longer time. So expanding the opportunities for anchored mixed-use sites that can accommodate those types of stores with highway exposure would be beneficial for attracting those types of businesses. There's also the opportunities for furniture, health and personal care and auto supplies I mentioned before. In order to enable the restoration of the Nesbit Commercial Node, we're looking at attracting or recruiting specifically restaurants, personal services and those types of businesses that wouldn't necessarily create a competition to downtown, but would complement the activities in the city and the opportunities there for some diversity of, of businesses. And then you also need to consider, and I'm not sure if this has happened either in the last several years, but the creation of a local economic development position within the city to help with things like business recruitment and specifically on sites like this and not just focused on things like warehouses, but really on creating those types of places that you want. I also looked at housing in terms of the existing housing framework and development framework and had some strategic recommendations there. One is based on what we've heard from the community and what we determined through the assessment of character. We want to retain a low-density character for Hernando and especially in targeted conservation zones. We would encourage the build-out of the approved Hernando West development that's been mentioned several times tonight because of the reasons that were given. It's, it's a well-planned type of development, although large, it is well-planned. And enable more mixed-use development to include housing within the community. Also enable infill housing development in and around downtown Hernando, like, is it Ivy, the one that, that we mentioned before, and, and some others that, that may have come online since then. And at designated locations, encourage development of lots for smaller, what I would call maintenance-free types of houses and cluster homes that meet the needs of an aging population, because we're all part of that, a lot of us are part of that baby boom that is aging in place and looking for those maintenance-free types of, of housing and smaller homes. And that's the market created for empty nesters as well as first-time buyers and, and retirees. So you have the barbell effect of the market with younger people who are looking for a smaller home and older people who are moving down from a larger home into a smaller home. And those markets need to be accommodated. And then also mixed-use development that can include condominium and rental units for singles, retirees and others, but in a well-managed environment, in a high-quality, well-managed environment. In terms of maintaining the quality of existing housing, we are suggesting that we target high-density to mixed-use zones and establish design standards within those zones. And also what we found over many years of looking at this is that carrot and stick approaches tend to work for maintaining rental housing quality. There are a lot of concerns when we were working on this several years ago about the quality of rental housing stock. And what we've learned nationally over many years is that using both incentives or carrots coupled with sticks or regulatory methods will help keep the maintenance of quality in line. So requiring a fee-based business license for rental properties was one thing that we suggested several years ago. Creating an opportunity or occupancy certificate, an inspection program that would be sure to target rental properties and creative incentives on the carrot side that can fast-track permitting and technical assistance for those types of rental properties that meet the requirements that have been set by the community. And now I'll turn it over to Phil.
Okay. Thanks, Randy. So I've got the last batch of slides. Hang in there, we're getting close. I'll try to be concise. And I'm going to talk a little bit about downtown, talk about parks and recreation, and then real briefly, natural and cultural resources. And when it comes to downtown, especially these organizational issues, this is probably one of those things where, as much as anything, circumstances may have changed where these may not all be as relevant, but anyway, we'll, we'll give it a shot. So on organization, and by the way, I organized these slides based on the Main Street, you're fortunate to have a Main Street program, and they always go by the four points, as they call it, organization, design, economic vitality and promotion. And so with organization, one of our suggestions was to focus, it, it's kind of an interesting entity that you have, that it's both a Main Street program and a broader citywide chamber, right? So anything we can do to particularly focus on Main Street and the four-point approach, including a work plan that's based on the four points. Establishing, and maybe you've done that since, but establishing working committees that are based on those four points. Sometimes there might be a particular issue that requires an ad hoc committee to, to deal with it. Trying to get a broader range of participants involved with Main Street, especially, we, we heard the need for more worker bees, you know, people that don't just show up at meetings, but really can help, you know, get things done. Better leveraging the resources of both the national and the state Main Street programs. And by the way, you know, Mississippi's got a fantastic Main Street program, statewide program. And, you know, just trying to do things like getting board members to be more active, go into conferences and things like that. And then really engaging in all four of those points in a fairly balanced manner. Now, there are going to be certain times when a downtown needs to focus more on one. It may, it may be promotion or whatever, but, but overall, you want to be fairly balanced with that. This slide combines both economic vitality and design, and the ideas include expanding the downtown footprint as a destination, because one thing we learned from the last time we worked here is that there's demand for downtown, you just need more of it, right? You literally need to grow your downtown geographically. And we'll talk about that in a second, particularly with these, these sites we've identified. Attract infill office and mixed-use development to help support the, the retail market. Also attract infill housing development to support retail market and to help recruit businesses. And just to kind of give downtown a more lived-in, you know, atmosphere, establish East Commerce as the downtown gateway. You know, Keith talked about that when he talked about place types and how we could extend downtown, you know, down East Commerce to the, to the railroad tracks roughly, and then, you know, enhancing traffic management. Now, the next two slides I'm going to show you relate to this map. Oh yeah, that doesn't work for that. But numbers one, two, three and four, I'm going to show you some infill concepts that Keith came up with on the next slide, and then we'll talk about site number five, which is where the post office is on East Commerce. So if you look at this one, building number one, what we're showing there, that's a vacant lot, and the idea is to, is to create an office building there that would front onto West Valley Street. Number two would be, it's a vacant site that would have townhouses with a mixed-use building at the very bottom right of that little cluster of buildings. And then number three, that's a vacant, and by the way, just to orient you, you know, where, where number three is, to the immediate southwest is the, is the square, the courthouse. And that would be a, a mixed-use building, and because of the slope of the, of the site, you could actually have parking underneath the building. And then finally, number four, that's on the other side of 51 where you have an existing gas station, and this isn't as critical as, as perhaps the other ones, but having something that's more of an urban form, there's a term they call gas backwards, which means you have the building in the front and the gas pumping stations are in the back, and it kind of, you know, pulls the building to the street and feels a little bit more urban. So that's, that's the idea there. Now, site number five from that map where your post office is, this is the, the plan that we came up with, and I'm going to start with, A, if you look in the front along Commerce Street, those would be one-to-two-story mixed-use commercial buildings. B, kind of in the middle to the left, would be two-to-three-story townhouses and/or live-work units. And C, towards the back of the site, would be single-family or multi-unit housing. And of course, the existing post office would stay. That large retail building to the right of it, that is the east of it, or kind of northeast, would stay. If there are visibility concerns that folks that, you know, like with the retail building, you could probably do with one or two less of those buildings in front if that's necessary, but this would certainly start to give that corridor a much more urban feel. When it comes to promotion, the idea of branding for downtown would be as an authentic small town, you know, kind of look and feel. Social media and tech support could be used a little bit more effectively to promote downtown. Conduct a local shop campaign, or shop local, led by the Main Street program. Enable and encourage food trucks to operate in downtown. And there are a lot of models out there, model ordinances to allow for food trucks, so you don't have to reinvent the wheel on that. And then finally, leveraging the two national heritage areas, you know, right now, I think the Soto County is the only county where the Mississippi Hills National Heritage Area and the Mississippi Delta National Heritage Area overlap. And we had proposed even, and I wrote the, the plan for the Hills and worked on the, the Delta Plan, and we had recommended in those that Hernando, downtown Hernando be the location of a joint interpretive center for both. It's kind of a jumping off spot, it's right off the interstate. Find another place where there's a great historic downtown, less than a mile off the interstate. So this would be the natural place, so we talk about that in the plan. Now, when it comes to policy adjustments for downtown, you need to enforce your on-street time limits, or on-street parking time limits. The last thing you want to do is have employees, downtown employees parking in prime, you know, on-street spaces where it ought to be reserved for people who are going to shop and dine and, and that sort of thing. So that's really important. Revise your onsite parking requirements. This area, that kind of red area on the map, that's your C3 zone, that's the downtown area, and it requires onsite parking. And in most small towns in the downtown, you don't require onsite, you rely on on-street, maybe off-site, but that makes it really hard to redevelop properties. We think you need to create a new zoning classification instead of the C3 that you have right now. For one thing, it allows some things that you wouldn't want. For example, you can do a bus terminal on your square, you could do a car dealership, you could do filling stations, you can do agriculture. Can you imagine, you know, Bob Barber will open up an alpaca compound right in your downtown if you don't revise this, I'm sure. So.
Right now.
And then there are things that should be prohibited, right? Or, I'm sorry, things that are prohibits, yeah, yeah, that should be allowed, like housing. It does allow accessory dwelling units, but food trucks, things like that, so it really needs to be retooled. And then your fire codes need to be revisited because they're really, make it tough to rehab buildings because of the sprinkler requirements. And we think, we go into detail in the plan about the, there's a existing building code that could be adopted to supplement what you have now, that would give a little more flexibility. Parks and recreation, you know, we looked at the NRPA, National Recreation and Park Association, metrics. These aren't standards, they're just kind of metrics, looking at other communities with your population and how many different types of parks they have. And when you look at those metrics, you could use, you know, based on the metrics, roughly 57 more acres of open space are parks, that is, one baseball or softball field, one-to-three outdoor basketball courts, two-to-seven tennis courts, three-to-seven miles of walking trails or jogging tracks, one spray park and 10-to-22 playgrounds. I know that sounds like a lot, but that's, you know, just going by the metrics. However, the good news is that in 2020, in fact, it was Russ's firm that put together a feasibility study and business plan, in other words, it's essentially like a parks and recreation plan that went a little bit further than that. And I'm going to spare you from all the details, but you can just see, these are just some examples of the types of improvements that were suggested for various parks in that plan. And then, you know, the Renaissance Park, you know, that was, the plan was prepared in 2012, it was never formally adopted. There is the skate park, there's the dog park, but there's some near-term objectives that should occur. Hopefully the whole thing will be built out, but things like ADA compliance and security lighting, more seating, permanent restrooms. And I was handed a note, forget about pennies for parks. Sorry, I didn't, wasn't aware of that second attempt and, and failure, but anyway. So we'll, we'll definitely delete that one from the, the plan. Natural resources, just got four things I want to hit real quickly. Require street trees for new subdivisions. Now, you've actually got a great tree preservation ordinance, but that's for existing trees. We're suggesting that it requires street trees for subdivisions. Reduce amount of paving for new developments, and we talk about ways you can achieve that. Encourage green infrastructure, things like bio swells and, and rain gardens, like you're seeing in that illustration, where you're, you're coming up with ways to take stormwater runoff and allow it to absorb back into the ground as opposed to piping everything and then dumping it, you know, in one area, and then improving stormwater management standards. And then finally, the last slide, we're, we're there, historic zoning revisions. And one is that you have, your, your current design guidelines are, are part of your zoning or, preservation ordinance, and it needs to have a lot more detail than just part of an ordinance, and it doesn't even have graphics. So we're recommending that you, you adopt a standalone, separate design guideline document that'll be a lot more effective when you do design review for your historic districts. Now, with regard to those existing standards, three things we're suggesting. One is that the bulk standards, that is building setbacks and heights and those sorts of things should be based on your historic development patterns, not on the underlying zoning requirements for setbacks and so forth. Also, federal preservation standards should be referenced in your guidelines because they're based on those, but it's, it's kind of important for legal reasons to make that connection. And then finally, and this is kind of my personal thing, I would avoid regulating paint colors if you can get consensus on that, because the one thing about regulating paint colors, first of all, it's reversible. You can repaint something another color. It's also the most subjective thing of any kind of guidelines, right? It really is kind of the taste police. And you want to keep historic zoning popular with the public, right? You want support. And that's the one thing you're always hearing, you're going to tell me what color I can paint my house? You know, you want to take that, that arrow out of their quiver in the argument against design guidelines. So I would suggest that you not worry about regulating paint colors. So that's a lot we threw at you. We got through it almost in an hour, no, I think we started five minutes late. I think we did an hour exactly. So you all have endurance and I commend you for sitting through that. And now it's time to, to answer your questions.
And, oh, Austin, how long have you been doing that with this? Have you written notes?
Yeah, if you want to just write out some comments or if you take any notes that's here, it's more, if you can really do that, or if you're going to do that, or if Chris has a lighter. Do you pay back, do you all want to press the group?
Do you like, do you not like, do you want to see change? You already know some things that need to change just because of the passive with the time.
You've got to look.
Yeah, right after, right after.
Yeah, right after, right after.
Yes, sir.
So, um, these street-facing, or street-border businesses with the parking lot behind, if you've never lived around those, you ought to go visit someplace that has incorporated that, even on a larger scale, I think, than we're here, because they're horrible. Now, that may not pass the survey test or anything like that, but me, as a slightly older person, if I'm looking for a new business and I don't see parking, I ain't going. I mean, because, you know, I, I just don't want to be blocking traffic, I don't want to get run over. And, you know, you, you, so in my opinion, it's one of these things that is great on paper, and it makes great architectural awards, not trying to step on too many toes here, but doing it nonetheless. I think it's not, it doesn't help business. Now, you, if you have customers who really need you, and they find you, and then they will go down this path to get to you, okay, but if you want new customers, people passing through saying, oh, my goodness, there's a whatever, and they can whip in, I understand the idea that parking lots are often very ugly, and that's possibly because there's no design enforced, there's no ordinances for saying you have to maintain your greenery in the parking lot. I've seen some very nice-looking parking lots, even in, in this area. But I, the idea of having a sidewalk and then a business wall is, I think, and I've seen some places. So Charleston, South Carolina, is where I'm from, they've done this, and people hate it. You get urban, what do you call it, urban channels? And so, anyway, my two cents.
Yeah, so let me address that, and maybe we didn't do a good job of kind of explaining the whole idea of the parking versus the buildings. This isn't suggesting we don't have parking at all, this is suggesting the relationship between the street, a building, and parking. So if you're in a suburban area, you know, you'll get a street and a big parking lot and a food, oh.
In a park, oh, for the, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'll kind of back up, but, but what we were saying is that it, it's really about the relationship of buildings to parkings to on-street parking. So we're suggesting in urban areas, not suburban areas, in a place like your, your square in, in those areas, or new places that might develop on that pattern, you would have on-street parking, you have buildings that come up, then you'd still have parking lots, but they're behind or maybe next to buildings. So we're not saying they'd go away. And, and by the way, some of the most valuable, prosperous places in the world, in America, are those that have buildings that come up to the street. I mean, in my neighborhood, I'm two blocks from a corridor like that, the buildings all come up to the street. There's parking in the back, people park on-street, and it's really vibrant. Your own square, you know, it's in so, such demand, we're recommending that it actually grow. And that's the pattern you've got around the square. You've got on-street parking and buildings that come up and frame the street, and then you've got parking behind and so forth. So I, I agree in a suburban area where that's the idea, you, you wouldn't want to have what we're suggesting, but it certainly can work in a downtown area. But that's, that's our view, so.
I believe three of you mentioned street trees. Are you talking about in subdivisions?
Yes, ma'am.
Who would be responsible for planting those trees, trimming them, getting up the leaves in the fall, cutting them down when, after 20 years, when they're uprooting the sidewalks? Who would be responsible for that, the city or the homeowners?
Well, the developers would be the ones putting in the trees. And then, as far as maintenance goes, it could be HOA or, I mean, I live in a neighborhood that's got plenty of street trees, it's one of the things that makes it attractive, and there's no HOA. I mean, I guess the city does it, utility companies, you know, deal with it. So, yeah, but, I mean, I'm sure you've been to places that were attractive.
I live in an area that has street trees.
Uh-huh.
And they have been there for about 20 years, and they've gotten so large now that they're shading, and no grass is growing in certain areas. And now we have water standing there. And there's a subdivision in Arlington, Tennessee, that's the same way. And they've been there even longer, and now the, the oak trees are uprooting the sidewalks. So then you have to go and replace sidewalks and cut the tree down. So I, I was just curious as to know whose responsibility that is.
Yeah, and.
Once it's been put in by the builder, and who's going to take it over?
Yeah, some of the problems that you were citing about trees are often the result of the wrong species that was planted, and especially, you know, nowadays, they can plant trees and not, you know, create the buckling of sidewalks, but there are ways to, to deal with that, so, yeah. But, but not everybody likes trees, so.
I just was curious whose responsibility it would end up being.
Yeah, i- in my case, in my neighborhood, it's not mine, it's, yeah, the city.
Well, my HOA spent several thousand of dollars just to have a few trees trimmed. And we, thank goodness, we hadn't had any cut completely down yet, but I just was curious.
Thank you.
I know that you mentioned walkability being one of the main features of, like, the Hernando-West development, and having mixed-use districts. And I was wondering if, as a part of that, would you be having, like, corner stores next to single-family or row houses or anything like that? Because in other places where you can just walk down the street to get milk or eggs or whatever from the convenience store, it really adds a lot of value to that place. We don't have anything like that, but I think it would be cool if it could be incorporated.
Yeah, exactly, you can do, you can do just what you described, and it's all because of design. And, you know, we're not talking about a ugly one-story box that sits, sits back on a parking lot. If you do it in a way where the building is a certain scale and has a certain relationship with the buildings around it, I mean, that's viewed as a huge amenity. I mean, people love to, you know, after dinner, walk down, get an ice cream cone, that kind of thing. And so, yeah, that, those kind of developments that Keith was describing really can accommodate. In a typical suburban environment, you wouldn't want to live near a, a small retail place because, or large, whatever, because of the design, the parking lot, all that. But it can actually work when you design it in a way that's based on historic development patterns. You know, we can all, if you visit old neighborhoods that have that corner store, and it fits in beautifully, right? Might even be turned into an office if it's not so retail. And it can work, but it works because of design, because you don't have a parking lot in the front.
Yeah, I, I live just off Oak Grove Road, and there's a big subdivision that's gone in since then behind me. It's all, I guess, half-acre, single-family, seems very soulless to me. Not a lot of trees, nothing to do, go home, go to work, no interaction with your neighbors. But if you took one house out, put in a little convenience store or something, you have commonplace to, to mingle with your neighbors and have commerce.
Yeah, and that's the other important thing about walkability, and as Keith was saying, it's not just about having the infrastructure of sidewalks. You need to have destinations, whether it's a park or, you know, the corner store, whatever. That really helps make places actually walkable.
Yes, my concern is, I had two, two concern, that is, you're talking about new develop, but in my community, our road need to be repaved, and we haven't been paved since 11 years. So we got potholes, sinkholes popping up left and right. Also, my other concern is, we building all these gas stations, filling stations, as you mentioned, but they're, they're not even a mile apart. You got two down here on Pleasant Hill, it's right next door, and it doesn't make any sense. Also, we need to start holding these filling stations reliable for income for people to work there to have 401K benefit package, because they, that's their livelihood. That's my concern right now, is what are we going to do? But all these filling stations are putting up. You got one on McEnville, which I didn't know it was there until I took a ride down Holly Springs. And it's like we got one made by Walmart and Commerce. So do we really need all these filling stations going up?
You know, with filling stations, of course, they're always located in a commercially-zoned area, but you don't, with zoning, you don't get into the details saying they have to be spaced X number of yards apart or anything like that. It's just, I mean, that is where you kind of let the free market dictate, but you can design them better. You know, we were talking about, I knew where you were going. The, the one we showed that's right there by the square that, that exists, and that's, that's a great business, it's very convenient for people to have right there, but it could be designed in a different way, where the building comes up to the street, and it feels more like an urban area, and the, the gas pumps are kind of behind. So there are better ways to, to design gas stations.
Yeah, and, and even in the, even in an area that's, that's non-urban, that is more suburban, there's still things that can be added to your development regulations to, to improve those stations. But it's, it's going to be more of the aesthetic sort of thing. It might be some bulk requirements. When I say bulk, I mean, you know, the size of the building, or the height of the building, or the, the way the canopies are designed. So, so whether it's suburban or whether it's more urban, as, as Phil was just saying, there are ways to make those better. It's, it's tougher to say you can only have this many, but, but at least you could design them better, so.
Did you just say?
I would just say, if there are real concerns about the number, growing number of filling stations in the community, then some communities require, when there's a business issue like that, that they submit an, sort of an economic impact assessment. Sometimes it's part of an environmental impact assessment, because filling stations can have an environmental impact. But either way, you have an impact assessment that looks at things like traffic or an economic impact, that really looks at whether there's a competition issue and all of that. So there are ways to incorporate that into the planning process, to make sure that there's some control over that, to make sure that they're at least looking at the competition in the market.
Yeah, one quick note on that, the city did recently change filling sections out of permit uses into conditions. I don't know if it's like, it's okay, an additional layer of use there.
Great, that's, that's a good improvement.
A quick question, this was discussed during the last meeting that you had about traffic flow pattern from east to west, which right now is mainly on Commerce Street, and there was a large need either for another thoroughfare north or south of there. Was that ever discussed? I couldn't see the road pattern there.
Yeah, Russ, do you mind addressing that one, and maybe I can go to that slide, hang on.
I mean, it's more of a increase in capacity along the other east-west routes, rather than creating new. And, and so I know we're showing some improvements along Oak Grove and Holly Springs.
I think it's more getting from far east side, sorry.
You know, the far east side, the Walmart area to the downtown area, basically crossing the railroad tracks. There's one way, or you got to go way north, or really south, there isn't a way through, across the railroad tracks.
Sure. And, you know, some of that, that's the way I came in, and I paid close attention. You go from four-lane, you know, which has a decent amount of capacity, down to two-lane, well, three-lane, you have a turn lane, and then down to two-lane, and it really gets congested there at the light at 51, where you have to, people are trying to turn left to go south or hop over 51. But that's so densely developed that it's sort of a, you know, a, a choice of character versus traffic, you know? Because at that particular intersection, to get the right way, you need to add a third option, you know? So you can just turn left, and how, how much queuing space? I mean, you would eat up a lot of space that businesses need for the on-street parking. So, I mean, that, that's a, that's a, you know, discussion for y'all to make, and, and see what, see what you prefer. I mean, sometimes, traffic, trafficking sometimes is a good problem. I mean, it's a problem that people are wanting to get somewhere for a reason, and you have to look at other places to the north and to the south.
Thanks. I have several comments, real quick. One is, I would appreciate some type of download of this whole plan. I wish we could have had this to be able to review it before we get here. It's a lot to assume into, I, I would, I'm an optimist, so I assume you're going to do everything for my benefit. And I don't know that that's going to happen. Part of the trade-off that I always see happen is, do you want commerce, or do you want homes? Do you want revenue, like wholesale, associated wholesalers, big place came in? I don't know, how does that fit into the plan? That's one. We've got a new plan for four lanes from Churchill or Goodman Road down, that just was announced today by the governor. How does that impact us? New businesses, I, my friend Aaron had a business that was blocked, that couldn't do business when the business opportunity was there. You have so much traffic at the Landers Center, his, his restaurant couldn't do business, because the police shut it down to allow commerce. And you're going to have commerce coming in where you have Starbucks and places on Commerce, and you're going to have such an interchange there that you go, I don't understand how that's going to impact it. The, I would look for other roads, what if, is there a plan like South Haven did with Silo Square? Move it off, move it out, move it away, go up to 269 and that interchange, and see what's going on there. So I, I don't know how that comes into this area of planning, as well as schools, and the accessibility of schools, and the expansion of schools into the plan. I, I don't see that. So I'm sure it's there, I'm an optimist. But at the same time, I don't know how things like that really come into it. And I know that when new buildings want to come in, like a Lowe's or Home Depot, and they don't want to follow the plan, how do you get them to follow the plan? And where we want them to go is not where they want to be. So how do we work with those things? So, and I don't know what the adoption of this plan would be, and the ability to help the city maintain the utilities and everything that's going. And I, I know there's a lot of people who, I, I know all of them, and they're not speaking because they're listening, but they really try to help us, and I appreciate that. But at the same time, for us to, as a bigger community than what we're seeing here, to impact this, the conversation, it's, I, I think would be nice. And then the other thing that would be interesting to study is, or to say is, if we don't like that, can we put a petition to stop it before it gets accepted? Just really, I want to put the brakes on that. I know some things happen where you say, it's got to go before the public, it's got to be put in the newspaper, and then you say, if I get 100,000 or 20,000 signatures, I can stop this, and we can really debate it. And I don't like to see, for example, what happened with the pennies for the park, and I don't know why we can't discuss that. I, I think that was railroaded in a way that the open debate about it was precluded by some false PR. And that frustrates me, that positive PR can really affect us, because we're all going to see taxes go up, we're going to see growth. So where we see that, how do we accomplish that? So I don't know if I ask a question, other than I'd like to know more about the details. I'd like to know about the four lanes that are coming down, and how that's going to affect us. If it all dumps on Commerce, how are we going to handle the Commerce traffic while we rebuild the highway? So those are some of the questions that I had. Yeah, so there was a lot of stuff, and, you know, the, the plan, the plan is well over 100 pages, so there's a lot of detail. So I think virtually all the issues that you raised are addressed somewhere in the plan. So the key is to make the plan available for everybody to review in detail. And, and I think the city can do that, probably posted on their website, so people can look at that. And when it comes to, like, ideas like, gosh, we, we need to get petitions signed and all that, I mean, I've never seen that have, have to be done in a plan like this. Because basically, the way it works is, if there's some idea, and there's a, a significant majority of people that don't like the idea, and they're, you know, make, make it clear, usually that idea just gets revised. I mean, that's, again, we did the plan over two years ago, and this is the, the stage where you present it, you get feedback, and you revise it again. I mean, there's no question we're going to be revising it. So that's all part of the process, and so that, you raise a lot of really good points. And I think if we can just make it available, that everybody can look at, and, and figure out a, a good mechanism for providing your input to the city, then, then hopefully you'll see revisions made as are needed, so, thank you.
I'm the negative one. He's the positive one, I'm the negative one. I actually don't have a negative comment, I have a question. The one thing that struck me, and I did go online and print it off, it's a bunch to assimilate. That's the old one, okay, this was the one that was actually on the, right, okay, so. All right, then I'll go, then I'll go print out another one, because that was the question when I got in the car with him. I was like, why is these dates, these dates don't look right? Anyway, okay, I'll print off the one that, but this was, it was on the page, it was right there. Okay, okay, then I'll go print out the new one, and I'll take the time to read it. My question is, when I look at this, which is what I picked up when I came in here, I'm a wild, I'm a wildlife person, and I'm an outdoors person, and the one thing that I know helps in a community is a place to gather, not necessarily a convenience store, but a park. in a community is a place to gather, not necessarily a convenience store, but a park. And what I don't see on this plan is a lot of dark green. Anywhere in the middle, there's some on the end. I know we have a few small parks, one is around the corner just behind the Walmart near where we live, but I don't see a lot of green. Is there any way to add?
Yeah, and it may, it may just not.
More natural areas here where I can gather with my family and my children and my neighbors? Because those are what I remember growing up. We could walk down the street and get to the little store where you could buy ice cream, but on the way, what we ran into was a huge park with gorgeous swings and big trees, and I would love to see more of that on this plan.
Yeah, and it may be, you know, this is a place types map, which is a little different. It doesn't call out every specific park. It's more about broader areas, so it doesn't really lend itself for that. But we have a whole section in the plan on parks and recreation. We, you know, i- if you remember my slides where we're comparing with the national metrics and kind of where you're, you're low and need to, you know, have more stuff, more parks, in fact. But in 2020, there was a whole plan done just on parks. And so when, when we're hired to do a citywide plan and there's some issue that our plan would cover, where they've done an entire plan like the year before on that issue, we tend to kind of defer to that since people put a lot of focus and energy into that issue and that process. So a lot of times we kind of fold stuff in, and that's pretty much what we did on this. But there are a lot of parks, you know, different types of parks, I mean, there are existing parks. But again, maybe it's, if you can get the plan document and, and take a look at it.
But wouldn't it be under, should like?
Well, it would be under, if, if it's large and if it's under, what, special place types or whatever? Yeah, I mean, this, yeah, exactly, so, community facilities, yeah. But again, if you go to the plan, you'll see a map just with parks.
And, and also, just, just one other thing, for new development that comes along, you know, new subdivisions or new mixed-use neighborhoods and so forth, you know, there could be things in your development regulations that make sure that, you know, there is those types of public spaces that are set aside in those developments. Now, not all public spaces are the same, you know? The, the square in your downtown might be different from the playground in your subdivision or your, or your neighborhood, so there are different types of parks. But a lot of times, development regulations will, will actually establish that. So, and those may be more, those may be more associated with a specific development, not necessarily a, a public facility that's maintained by the city, but there could be opportunities to make sure that new development incorporates those, and that's a nice complement to your public parks as well.
Thank you.
A quick note, the plan is available, what's like the utility? Get home in the next week or so, you read it, have any comments, just email it to us after.
So, just a couple of comments. I-269 is Hernando's front door, its newest front door. In my view, it's absolutely vital that it be exceedingly well-cared-for as it develops because it's going to develop. I'm noting on your place type map, you have mixed-use development at the McEnville interchange, and I'm assuming, should the properties at the Getwell interchange convert, there've already been zoning requests in that area that are not compatible with the ag designation you have here. Would you, would you, are there recommend days, recommendations or ways to extend the place type out to the other interchange because it's going to develop? It's just a matter of a few minutes. That's number one. Number two, the emphasis on the mixed-use, well-crafted, highly-designed developments is very encouraging. Hernando, in my opinion, needs to move in that direction in every way it can. With regard to the pedestrian components, that's, any way we can expand pedestrian connectivity through trails, greenways, bike lanes, and put street trees there. Because if you run like you do, and I know you're a runner and I'm a runner, when you're running in July, you want shade, or when you're walking in July, you want shade, and the only way to get it is a street tree. They add in tremendous value to the community. And just the last comment on the mixed use, you've already hit on it. The most loved place in our region, north of Oxford, is the Hernando Town Square. It is the place. And whatever we can do to expand, extend, take cues from how Hernando's Town Square has developed and apply it to suburban places, we should do so. Case in point, Williams and Pitts Accounting at McEnville and Thousand Oaks, there are three buildings in a suburban environment pull right up to a street with a greenway sitting in front of it. It, it works and it will, can work all over town. So, thanks for the work, and those are some comments.
Thank you very much. And your first thing was about the interchange on 269. We can go back and revisit that and see if we need to give it a different place type. Very good.
Um, I had a question about the sewer on Jaybird, y'all are laughing, but it really stinks. Uh, Jaybird and, we even sometimes go a different way to Hernando to avoid the smell. And I know those poor people that live there, I mean, it's, it's bad.
Yeah, you know, that's, I'll be honest, that's not an issue I remember, and Russ, I doubt, since you didn't really deal with the utilities section yourself, you, you probably don't have a response to that.
Well, that's what can happen, when you can have I and I where water enters the system, but you can also have the opposite where.
Yeah, so I'm not sure what the solution is there, but yeah, that, that one's not addressed in our plan.
It is.
But hopefully it'll be duly noted here.
And also, um.
We have property that's I-269 and Getwell, and I was wanting to know when the sewer will be on the property. I mean, it's in the city limits right now. We've been paying city taxes for five years, whatever.
Yeah, I, I have no idea when, when, you know, that issue, that level of detail, especially recently. And, but wouldn't that be something that, like if a development occurred, a developer would bring the sewer out?
Well, they, sort of like, you know, they want to know, do y'all have sewer? I mean, we've got everything else.
Well, I remember just with Hernando West, one of the issues there had to do with, I think it was utilities, sewer and/or water was, you know, like who's, who's going to be responsible? Developer, which is normally the case, or would they get some kind of public help? So, yeah.
I just, I heard today that the American Wholesale Grocers, I talked to Chip a little bit after, after the meeting, they're going to have 3,000 trucks on green tea at 51, mostly on green tea. And there's not a plan right now that I've heard of. I've, I've heard of a roundabout, but how can we support 3,000 trucks on green tea when we've got a new high school coming in and a lot of kids come through there and drive through there without somebody getting killed? And 51 and green tea is terrible, you cannot take a left most of the time. And if you've got 3,000 trucks coming from that huge warehouse, that's a problem. And how long is it going to take for 51 to get finished so that it can support 3,000 trucks? I'm not making that number up, that's what they said today. It scares me, it's really scary.
Yeah, has that facility been developed yet or is it in the works? It's there, okay. How, how long's it been there? Okay. Yeah, because I can't remember if it had been announced when we did our plan. I mean, yeah, I can't remember.
Oh, you mentioned the development, the West development. Well, on McEnville, where they have done the new McEnville Road that connects with 269, all of that area in there has already been approved, I thought, for development that is similar to the West development. But y'all did not mention that in any way, and he was talking about being developed right there on 269. And that is right on 269.
At, at the, at the time of the, of the planning, when we were here last time, so a couple of years ago, there was talk of that development. But I believe, and I could be totally wrong, but I thought at that time it was in a bit of limbo and had not been formally approved, but I may be wrong about that. So maybe now it is, it is further along, I don't know.
I thought it's in the plan.
The, the McEnville.
It is in a limbo.
Yeah, that's what.
It's a proven plan, but it has to be revised because of the realignment of the McEnville Road.
Yes.
And so technically it does have land's approval, but it's not realistic. They do have to come back.
There you go. So that's probably, that's, that's, right, right. We, we were aware of it.
Thanks. Good memory.
I just got one question.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, on the expansion of Highway 51, you know, by Associated Grocery, when is that supposed to take effect? Because, like I said, people going to work in the morning time, it's just congested, you know?
Yeah, so expansion of Highway 51, does anybody know when that's going to take effect?
The downtown parking, they want more business downtown, but there's no parking. I mean, you come here on, on a weekday and people going to courthouse, I mean, you gotta keep circling around, circling around, looking for a parking space.
Yeah, as far as parking, if you remember, one thing I was talking about with downtown is that you need to manage, you need to enforce time limits for on-street parking because what you don't want to happen is folks that are like, you know, employees that are down there all day parking on-street. That's where you want people who are going to spend money in shops and restaurants and limit it to two to three hours. So sometimes it's not about not having enough parking, it's more about how it's managed or lack thereof.
What employee's going to park here? They have to get to work.
You're right, but they shouldn't be parking on the street. I mean, you, you know, in most downtown areas, when you have employees who work there, they find a place to park, you know, peripherally, a church parking lot or something like that, on-street on a, on a side, you know, residential street. But you definitely don't want, you know, employees parking in your prime parking spots on streets.
And then another thing too, with Commerce Street underneath 55, it's so narrow there, you see people hitting them guardrails all the time. That need to be expanded.
Right, and that is in the plan. I remember, because, yeah, I've driven through, I, I did it tonight, in fact, and I was like, oh yeah, you got to breathe in when you, when you go through there, and, but we did address that in the plan.
And one more thing, a red light at Green Tea and 51, is that going to be like, in the future?
A red light at, at Green Tea and 51.
Well, the congestion that we, the guy said he couldn't make a left turn on 51 to go south.
Yeah, do you know?
Yeah, because they told me they're going to put a red light there, like, this, this is like three years ago.
Okay, that may be something that's on the books, but it just hasn't been implemented yet. Oh.
Phil Chapert has been hired by MDOT, and they have designed it out there that will handle truck traffic and slow it down. And, it's not funded by MDOT. Coming online in the next couple.
Great.
Just a couple of comments. I think some of the economic analysis and some of the data that you're using to base the comprehensive plan on seems to be a little bit dated, needs to be updated just a little bit. Also, I think the McEnville Road realignment needs to be taken into account for land use purposes. And maybe make that more of a mixed-use commercial corridor, which would help relieve some traffic issues off of Commerce Street. Also, maybe take into account land use around the Getwell Road exit for future use. And frankly, tax revenue needs to be something that drives this, at, at least in part, because we're talking about a lot of livability, a lot of usability, but you still have to pay for everything. And so you need the commercial, you need maybe to pre-plan some industrial additional zoning in areas where it won't directly impact residential areas or at least have substantial buffers between those areas. And that's my comments.
Okay, and you're correct about the economic data being a little outdated because we did it three years ago, so that's, that's accurate for sure.
I'm thinking about the revenue. Where is the, you know, because.
No, you're talking about doing a lot, an expansion. Where's the revenue?
Yeah, so we have an implementation section in the plan that people that take a look at the plan can, can look at. We didn't, we, we figured if we tried to include that stuff, it's so detailed, and we knew we were throwing a lot at you as it is, so we didn't really cover implementation. One thing to remember, the vast majority of land in, in the whole study area, your community is privately owned. So a lot of stuff, you know, we're setting kind of the framework so the private sector can do a lot of the things. When it comes to the public realm-like roads, for example, I mean, that's funded through, you know, high, state highway grants and, and things of that nature. So, and the other thing too is that in the implementation section, we take all the key ideas and group them into topics, like five or six general topics, and we, and we list each key idea, and we have, we designate who's the responsible party, what's the sequencing in, in terms of like, you know, near-term, midterm, long-term, you know, where we give assigned year increments to that. And so that, that stuff is in there, but it's, it's a lot to go through.
Yeah, one last thing, on the bike lanes. I mean, you put bike lanes in, you got people playing on the phone, like texting, not paying attention. I mean, people running or jogging or riding a bike, they get ran over, and it's like, oops, I didn't mean it. You know, I mean, something's got to be done about that.
Yeah, I mean, it, I don't think it means we should not encourage cycling, and the best thing you can do is try to have, you know, bike lanes that are designated, that at least that's a safer condition than the share, which is a shared road system in, in most cases. So I, I, I don't think you can give up on trying to provide bike infrastructure. You just need to design it in a way that's going to be as safe as you can.
I just have a phone, like DC or something, or they have, just have a phone while driving. Let me start. Be the next favorite.
I think we've worn them out. Well, oh, yes, no, it's okay.
All right, so early in the morning, there's usually lots of school congestion on Bahalia Road in, in between Commerce Street and where Bahalia goes underneath 55. I was going to see if there's any study about either, because you have a lot of people turning in, into the school right there off of Bahalia Road, dropping off their kindergarteners, going to the first grade, or dropping their kids off for first grade. And so there's usually a lot of congestion right there, especially if you're trying to head, if you're heading south on Bahalia Road, heading to Commerce Street, you're going to hit that school traffic, and you might as well leave early. But I was going to see if there was anything in the plans, maybe to eliminate that, sort of like what they did with the McEnville bypass around Hernando Hills, that, which, taking my daughter in the morning, that's awesome, there's no headache, but if I'm going to Commerce, it's a different story. But also, I was thinking about was Oak Grove Elementary on the south side of town, that's a two-lane highway, or a two-lane road, each, or one, one lane going each way. If there's going to be any future expansion, maybe putting a turning lane in the center or what would, if there was any plan for the future for it.
Yeah, I don't know, oh, Russ has got some answers.
Yeah, Oak Grove is, the last one is scheduled to be the Parkway or Avenue, so a, a third lane or possibly, you know, four lane. We're showing Green Tea, which someone mentioned earlier with the increased truck traffic, and the one around the school, the one that's, the first one you mentioned, as avenues or local roads. We'll look to see if that needs to be bumped up to, you know, the next category up for capacity, which is the parkways and avenues.
The truck traffic on Green Tea.
You have to have the microphone to go through the live stream, sorry.
I don't want it copied. All of the truck traffic is not going to come off of Green Tea, is it? Ain't a lot of it going to come off of 55 at, at Nesbit Road?
Yeah, I'm, to be honest, we Yeah. I'm, to be honest with you, I'm not familiar with the destination, but what I'd recommend is, is work with the-
Warehouse up there.
With the distributor, and, and kind of find a route that provides the least amount of conflict or least amount of congestion. If you can get them onto 269, you know, there at McEnville, and then they can go north and south on 55 or east-west on 269, that keeps them, the trucks off your local roads, keeps them out of you going to your businesses and your homes. And, you know, and I'm in Hattiesburg, and there are truck routes, defined truck routes. And when, when through trucks are caught, they're ticketed. And, you know, their employers have to pay that ticket. And it's for certain, it's for chicken trucks that, for, you know, drive through downtown Hattiesburg when there are alternate routes. And that's a training deal, that's a coordination deal with the, you know, people that manage those drivers. So that, that's what I'm going to write down as a-
That's part I don't understand. From 55 to 51 on Playa and Hill Roads, a lot closer route than circling through on 69, McEnville, and Green Tea. I mean, I don't understand the route.
Why they're doing what they're doing, yeah.
I don't think all the trucks are going to come that way. I just, I don't know, but it'd be a crazy decision for somebody.
It's a, it's a, develop a plan, and then enforce it, you know, is the best-
Like, you're talking about 3,000 trucks a day going through there? You can forget going down 51.
Right. So now's the time to have those conversations.
Did you have a question?
Can I ask one?
One more question?
Sure.
The gentleman that was here a while ago was talking about the traffic, and it's on McEnville that comes from Commerce to Byhaya Road, through that light, and keeps on going on the new road that's winding around like that to go to 269. And then, as soon as you cross 269, you got, what, a mile and a half or two miles of the new high school that's going in there. McEnville from Byhaya down to Commerce is only two lanes. And there's a ton of traffic on it now. And when that, I mean, there's enough traffic to begin with at where the high school is now. They have two cops out there every day directing traffic. But then, when that new high school opens up, there's even going to be more. And they put that new sidewalk in for people to walk and ride bikes and whatever. I don't see anywhere where there's any room to put another lane, even for a turning lane on McEnville, because they got a new church, a new church going in down there. And then all, what, addition to the other church on Byhaya, it's a mess, it's going to be a mess. It's already bad enough now, but it's going to be a mess before long, especially with the new high school. So hopefully, by the time the new high school is done, they'll figure out something to do with McEnville.
Sure. We're, we're showing McEnville as a Parkway or Avenue, which is an expanded roadway from the way it is now.
Talking on the south end.
Yeah. And that's what I mentioned to the gentleman, that, is that we're going to reassess Mount Pleasant and Byhaya to see if it needs to be upgraded to Parkway or Avenue to help, help with that congestion increase.
So you're going to do something to McEnville?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. You going to do with that sidewalk they put in?
It would be, yeah, it would be north of there, I thought is where the issue was, north of 269.
That's where they put the, should have put the other lane, it's on where the sidewalk is. But, okay, thank you. I just was concerned.
All right. Oh, no, more. Okay.
I, I, I'm sorry I keep bringing this up, but it's, it's real serious. But they, they have increased, they, they have widened Green Tea and put extra pavement on it. And again, I'm going on these trucks, because that's a lot of truck traffic on Green Tea. It's going to be extremely dangerous. You already can't take a left off of Green Tea onto McEnville in the morning. Chip, maybe they could have those trucks coming at a separate time, early before any of the school traffic starts.
I don't know the legalities of the memorandum that was signed with AWG, if they have to go that way, if it's recommended. We're going to find out the answer and see how many of them we might could shoot up to 51 to get them off.
Because it really is scary. It's pretty scary. Somebody's going to get killed. There's no doubt, if those, that many trucks are coming during school traffic, there's going to be some kids killed. That's how bad it is going to be. When they said 3,000 trucks today, I said, that's, that's unbelievable. I had no idea.
We're, we're listening.
Yeah, thanks.
All righty. Well, listen, I want to thank you all again for being here. I know there was a lot of information you had to try to digest. I think it will help when, when people go to the website for the city and, you know, look at the plan in detail. We know there are going to be, you know, some substantial changes, just if nothing else, because of the passage of time, but also the input we got tonight. So I want to thank you again for being here. And please, you know, keep this project on your radar screen and follow it to, to its end. So thank you very much.